Bienvenidos a RMIT y el webinar global del Consejo de la Ciudad de Barcelona sobre el heredaje de alimentos para los futuros. Mi nombre es Marta Fernández y soy la directora ejecutiva de RMIT Europe. Antes de empezar como institución australiana, haré un aconsejamiento de país, que es nuestro modo de aconsejar lugares y personas ante nosotros.
Unripe fruit because none of these fruits, um, a lot of these unripe fruits are actually quite toxic. And then medicinal use is also a big thing because a lot of these plants not only provided food for Aboriginal people, but also featured heavily in the Aboriginal pharmacopeia. So there may be bioactivity that imposes on their safety. And a good example is the kangaroo apple, which grows down here in Victoria where I am. The, the unripe fruit is toxic, the ripe fruit can be eaten and then leaves and barks from the tree can be used in a tonic and it was used as a contraceptive. So you can see that there's medicinal use that is going to affect bioactivity within the plant and then the food that you can eat. Um, now these practical skills, as I mentioned, are largely undocumented. There is, that is, there's really no, no literature out there. Explorers didn't take much time to really record this when, when Australia was colonized. So a lot of this is stuck up in cultural knowledge and this is what I get on to at the next points. That Aboriginal people have held a lot of this knowledge in their culture. So you see it in the art and the dance, which often features animals, plants and seasonality. Same with the creation stories, which are deeply tied to the landscape. And a good example is a murbi or the white fig, which is pictured over here, which is the tree of life in my peoples, the Gumbenga peoples', um, creation stories. And another example is the seasons calendars. So if we go to the next slide, I can talk a bit more about that. So here's an example of seasons calendars and this was put together by Dr Emma Woodward at CSIRO. And the website's down the bottom there. Um, but these seasons calendars, about seven of them that they worked with traditional owners from up north to put these together. And these are a, a great example of how Aboriginal people were connected to the land and took observational cues from the land to tell them about next things that were going on. And these are just great examples of how you can see, um, real, really how Aboriginal people have a complete, a huge wealth of knowledge. And we need to have these regulatory frameworks kind of come in line with that. So then Aboriginal people can successfully use their knowledge and take ownership of it. So next slide, that's all from me. Yeah, I just wanted to give an overview of the kind of work I'm doing, but really just point out that fact that it's fine to kind of lean on Aboriginal culture and traditional knowledge. But at the end of the day, we need to prop Aboriginal people up and Indigenous people around the world to take agency of their knowledge and really have ownership of this. Um, so that's all and I'll pass it back to Mada.
Thank you very much. Luke, that was absolutely fascinating and great to hear how much we have to learn from indigenous practices in, in agriculture and, and the, and the work that needs to be done, you know, the, a lot of work that needs to be done to get uh, the regulation to, to match and support and enable uh, these forms of traditional agriculture. Uh, so our next speaker is Chris Andrew and Chris is the general manager of Black Duck Foods Limited, which is an Australian indigenous social enterprise that is committed to traditional food systems that care for country and also return economic benefits directly to indigenous peoples. According to Chris, Black Duck Food is trying to re-establish the traditional agricultural methods and systems that were used pre-colonization and reinvigorate that back into the Australian food system. Chris holds degrees in chemical engineering and in teaching. Over to you, Chris.
Hola, everybody in Barcelona and Warhami and Gani, I'm talking to you from Daraik Country, uh, Sydney, uh, New South Wales and Australia. It's actually wonderful to be joining a conversation about food heritage and sustainable food systems. Australia holds probably the oldest food systems and a food system that supported the oldest living culture in the world. And it's an important facet passing on from what Luke's talked about, that as we look to solutions to challenge and to meet the challenges of climate change, there's a role for many of us to start looking towards and start re-engaging with First Nations food systems and First Nations practices that supported the original food stories across the globe. And in Australia, for many of us, we're only re-learning or learning for the first time a food story that actually goes back sixty-five thousand years and beyond. So it's my opportunity today and my pleasure to try and relay a little bit of that story that we're undertaking at Black Duck Foods. As mentioned, we're an indigenous social enterprise. And if we could move to the next slide. There's certainly a growing interest, um, in Australia and beyond in Australia's traditional foods. There's been press, there's been books, there's been a growing awakening of knowledge, both by indigenous and non-indigenous Australians into these stories. And it's important for us to move forward in terms of respecting and, and providing a better equitable platform for those traditional food systems. So Black Duck Foods is part of an ecosystem of indigenous organizations operating in this emerging sort of traditional food sector. And one of our, our key focus, I guess, is, is working around the traditional grains and tubers and, and how we can operate respectfully and bring those to market for the economic benefit of First Nations people in Australia. So if we can move to the next slide. Luke touched on this a little bit, but it's really important to reinforce, um, this message of equity. And I think this is a, a challenge faced by many First Nations people across the world. That in Australia, the industry is growing and specific areas of finger limes, lemon myrtle, wattle seed, these are all in demand and, and have been, and there's other products coming on, the kakadu plum and others that are increasing demands and there's demands not only locally but internationally. But it's really important to, to set a framework and, and have people understand that that food story, that sixty-five thousand year old food story that's integral, integral to First Nations people in Australia, that's been misappropriated. An indigenous representation in the supply chain from growers to farm managers to exporters is less than one percent in Australia. And that's ongoing and it may well have pushed up slightly, but it's disproportionate to the ownership and the, and the respect that that story should be attached to our First Nations people. There's many, many factors to why that's occurred, many of them related to a denial of these food systems in Australia. So as we reawaken these stories, it's important to make sure that we put frameworks in place and the work that Luke's doing is very important to that. And how do we create better acknowledgement through the food safety systems for these emerging and rediscovered food systems? So if we could move to the next slide, one of the areas I'm keen on sort of talking about is an area where there's growing understanding, knowledge and recognition in Australia. And certainly an area that excites me in terms of the way this could be developing into a, a new and bold food sector, but one that also draws on knowledge around land management that will help build resilience across the landscape for Australia as we confront the challenges of climate change. So as Luke mentioned, we, one of the areas of interest for us is indigenous native grains. And, and across the globe, um, ancient grains get a lot of attention. In Australia, we've had grain system that spanned the continent and operated, as said, for about sixty-five thousand odd years. This map was created, um, by an archaeologist back in the seventies, Norman Tyndale. And he put it together on the basis that he was tracking, um, grindstones that had been used by First Nations people across the landscape. So you can see this map drawn out sort of connects an area that's about thirty percent of our landmass. And it connects different grain systems across the continent, across almost all the states in Australia. And the, and they represent not a homogeneous grain, not a, this is not wheat. This is a multi-grain system, particular to the country, to the climate, to the language, to the people, to the stories of that land. And it spanned the nation, allowed people to transsect and follow story, go to ceremony and supported them in that way. There's been a lot of attention more recently around these grain systems in terms of rediscovery of their support and incorporation into the food system. And what is being discovered and, and obviously what is a benefit and what we're keen on developing is with discovering far superior nutritionally valued grain systems. Grain systems that, uh, have two to three times the protein level of wheat. And so some of these grain systems are competing protein levels with chicken. There's other areas of, you know, high nutrition where they're competing in superior sorts of ways to other traditional grains. So this is, um, I guess, building momentum of research institutions to gather more and more information. And, uh, you know, the real risk is by prospecting and that one percent of returns to indigenous people, which is the current status quo, will be maintained if First Nations people aren't provided the opportunity to participate equitably and fairly and acknowledged that they hold these stories for these food systems. Number of other aspects that are exciting people about these traditional grain systems is not only are they more nutritious, but they're very economically viable, they're no input to very low input. And once established because they're perennials, so there's no sowing a crop, that crop comes each year. And if you've got C3s and C4 grass mixes, you've got grain systems that you can harvest summer and winter. So two systems perennially giving you grains. I think conscious for everybody in the current climate we're in at the moment, in terms of carbon, is that these grass systems are represented by deep rooted perennials. And so they're sequestering carbon back into the soil, so not only improving the health of soil, but in a lot of ways, putting carbon back and mobilizing that and providing life and nutrition back to other food systems that also occupy the same space. Very pertinent for Australia is that these cropping systems build a resilient landscape and a farm scape. So as we're faced with the challenges of reduced rainfall in some areas, greater exposure to fires, these traditional grasses are traditionally being burnt, so they're very receptive to continuous and ongoing fire regimes and they weather droughts because that's what they've been operating under for thousands of years. And one of the more exciting aspects of these grain systems for First Nations people, First Nations organizations operating in this space, is that because it's linked to the oldest food story in the world, it talked about food providence. And in Australia, we have over three hundred different indigenous nations across the landscape. Each one has a different story, a different language, a different connection to that food system. And it's a wonderful way that we can, in Australia, start celebrating our, through geographic indicators, our own food providence of these sorts of food systems that come with wonderful language, wonderful history, wonderful knowledge. And in a lot of ways, we get to explore our own culture, our own history through the food that we eat. So if we could move to the next slide. So there are a number of challenges as we resurrect these food systems. Um, it's important to look at what a roadmap is. And one of the projects that we're working on is developing an, an industry roadmap that looks up the research, development and extension work in the grain sector. Because these grains represent a non-homogenous product. So in terms of harvesting, in terms of processing, in terms of bringing them to market, they require some nuance in terms of the different processes that, that will allow that to happen. And even before we bring them to market, there's a rehabilitation of the landscape that for the last, uh, two hundred years, post-colonization has been willfully and accidentally damaged by trying to introduce European farming systems into a non-European landscape. So it presents exciting opportunities and each opportunity is a new way of bringing First Nations people to lead that industry, to inform that industry and to participate equitably and economically in it. And just I'll, I'll close with the last slide. So amongst Luke's many skills, he's not only a researcher, but he's a mighty handy cook. Uh, and part of connecting with these sorts of food systems is to come to the farm, which is a, a research and demonstration place and to, to cook up and, uh, and, and celebrate what mother earth provides. And so we've had the opportunity to collaborate with Luke. And, uh, we've also had the opportunity to celebrate some of these food systems and, and eat them. And there's nothing like, uh, a demonstrable process of eating what you're talking about to get more and more people engaged. So thank you very much for inviting me in and, uh, look forward to answering any questions at the end of this.
Thank you very much, Chris. What a fantastic presentation. And to learn about these crops that are economically viable, adaptable, but also, as you point, the longest standing continuous food system in, in the planet and is also climate positive. Uh, so I really hope that we can preserve, protect and, and promote them. And I can't wait to be able to go back to Melbourne again so that hopefully I can try some of those grains. And we're now going to be hearing from Gemma Carbo, who's the director of the Museum of Rural Life based in Tarragona in Spain. She's also the coordinator of the Karuya Foundation, president of the Interarts Foundation and co-founder and president of the Association Con Arte Internacional, which is focused on promoting arts and cultural education for social inclusion and development. Gemma was previously the director of the UNESCO Chair in Cultural Policies and Cooperation at the University of Girona. Her research interests lie in the fields of cultural and educational policies and the evaluation of arts educational programs in formal and non-formal sectors. Over to you, Gemma.
Thanks so much, uh, for inviting me and congratulations for, for the initiative of, of the Ermit, uh, talking about food as a heritage. Um, the Museum of Rural Life, uh, is, is the one you can see in this photo. It was opened in nineteen eighty-eight in the old ancestral house of Karuya family. That is the one that you can see at, at the end of the photography, the old one. Uh, the museum, uh, has the aim of preserving and disseminating the legacy of Mediterranean rural world. Yeah, very linked to Mediterranean, um, diet, uh, that you know well. Luis Karuya was the founder of the museum and he was, uh, aware of the value of a heritage of customs and implements that were the fruit of a legacy of culture and wisdom uh, reaching many centuries back into the past. In two thousand nine, after a process of enlargement and modernization of the permanent exhibition, the museum extended its discourse to the present and the future of the rural world with the aim of becoming a central actor at international level in the fields of culture, rural life and sustainable development. The permanent exhibition of the museum allows visitors to see what life was like in rural areas in the past, what it is like today and what it outlook it for tomorrow. Uh, you can pass the next slide, please. The museum preserves, uh, both tangible and intangible, uh, heritage, a large collection of tools and objects related to work in the soil, olives, wine and wheat, and life in the little rural village, but also an important active of photography, oral history and documents with knowledge concerning natural health, food or celebration in rural life. The collection also includes artistic works like mural paintings, sculptures related to agriculture, traditional jobs and trades, lifestyle and culture in rural areas. A central axis of the, of this project, of this project is also an ecological orchard and an ethnobotanical garden from which different activities related to agriculture, traditional knowledge and sustainable food are done. Life in rural areas, uh, is a little bit like indigenous, uh, knowledge and indigenous tradition. It composes, uh, specific capabilities of people. Connected with using natural resources and organizing their communities in a circular economy. The industrial revolution and urbanization processes mean the end of that situation in Europe. Good examples from the past, but also bad practices from the past. Um, as well as the effects of the transition from rural to urban realities suppose an important amount of knowledge that today seems to be necessary if the capitalist model of development needs to be changed towards a more sustainable one. You can pass the next, uh, slide, please. The museum's team understands culture as a set of evolving patterns and processes that reflect who people are, what people think and how people act as individuals and groups, as well as the artistic universal languages that people use as a society to express it. Music, songs, crafts were an important part of rural life. Nature was at the core of it and it's currently at the core of many contemporary artistic languages like the visual arts, poetry, theatre, cinema, et cetera. As Hen stated, cultural development is a basic and inseparable component of development in general. If people are deprived of the opportunity to understand and cultivate a creativity, then that in itself is an hindrance to development. Therefore, culture defines and cocotizes the economy, the way people socially organize their lives and relations with the environment and also the languages and narratives they use to explain it as the other speakers were talking about. So science and art are like forms of knowledge that need each other to account for all the complexity of the living world. You can pass to the next slide. According to that ideas, the museum's pedagogical project emphasizes the need to learn the consequences of decisions made in the past to know how to better face the future. If societies do not know where they came from, in terms of food especially, that is the, that we're talking about here, we, people will not know where we should know go back to. The root of the current socio-cultural and envi- envi- environmental crisis is in the way people think, feel and act. That is why generating processes of cultural transformation is needed to get to the root of the crisis. Our educators consider that if the planet, economy and societies must be sustainable, today's culture needs to be transformed. In that sense, memory, heritage and creativity are essential to change the current paradigm towards sustainability. A cultural transformation is needed and a socially engaged cultural institutions, museums play an important role in achieving it. That is what the museum's team tried to do through programming temporary exhibitions and related educational activities. You can pass the next slide, please. According to the classic scheme of sustainable development, it is based on three interconnected pillars, the environment, the social environment and the economy. The museum's team believe that the culture is the fourth pillar of sustainability. And the logical museums are especially well placed to be spaces for debate and knowledge transferred about all the development goals. Because ethnological museums are concerned with cultural diversity in human models of relation with nature through time. The idea is a derivation of the concept of ecomuseum, defined today as a dynamic way in which communities preserve, interpret and manage their heritage for sustainable development. Museums can play an important role in sustainability work. Sacha, Sacha Kagan has argued that sustainability is about reinventing war, war. It is a cultural project. Science and the arts are both relevant to understand people's connection to planet, earth and humanity. Using the concept of ecological literacy, the prestigious, from Capra, the prestigious scientist explains that nature has developed sustainable systems and suggests that humans should learn from it. From this observation, Capra proposes the need for ecological literacy, which is to understand the principles of ecosystems organization and use them in order to create sustainable human communities. So we can pass the next slide, please. This is a, an explanation about how culture is this fourth pillar of sustainability. Uh, it comes from Turkey. It was a little explanation in Julie's Bicycle Activity last week. And I think it's important because you can see here how culture means participation, collaboration, connection, democratization. So if we understand culture also, like, uh, this heritage food and these ways of life heritage, um, the conclusion of the, the relevance of culture and sustainability is, is very, very, uh, quickly. We can pass the next, uh, slide, please. The aim of our pedagogical project is to provide spaces and resources to learn and reflect on the sustainability from a polyedical perspective that combines an environmental with a social, economic and cultural perspective. The museum's educators conceive learning processes as an acquisition of individual and collective skills and competencies for coexistence, resilience and the creative imagination of newer scenarios in the face of the climate and environmental and sociocultural emergencies. There are these, are the educational and cultural communities of the museum's closest environment, as well as the social groups of the territory. The UNESCO Education for Sustainable Development Goals establish the K transversal competencies for the achievement of the, uh, agenda two thousand thirty. The activities carried out in museum focus on these K competencies, adapting, adapting the UNESCO proposal to cultural education for sustainability in the following way. Systems thinking competency, anticipatory competency and of course strategic competency and collaboration competency. We can pass to the other slide, please. We do that through, uh, our, uh, organic orchards and ethnobotanical garden, that is the, the result of a research we have done with the community about the plants uh, and the vegetables that, uh, that the landscape, uh, used to have before the industrialization and that are very related with the three main products of the Mediterranean diet, the wine, the olive and the cereal. We can go to the next slide, please. This is an example of our organic orchard. And, uh, here we, you can see our collaborators. They are women from a cooperative, uh, model of organization that work doing this kind of research of ethnobotanical perspective and combine, um, the garden with the orchard in the same, uh, sense that, uh, the communities do before industrialization. We can go to the, the other slides. Well, this is a little example of how we explain every, uh, plant, uh, talking about the use that this plant, uh, used to have in the community. And that is related sometimes with just playing or just, uh, as the other speakers talk about, uh, health, about animal health or about, uh, eating, about human alimentation. We can go to the other one. What called Ramazas is the, the, this cooperative of young women that are working on that. There are so many, uh, women cooperatives doing agroecological, uh, work. So, uh, this is a very interesting question. So just to finish, uh, let's put the other one because I think the time is going on. Um, so this is a little video, we can just take just a few seconds to, to see a little bit more about the atmosphere of the museum. Uh, but you can just finish when, when you want. Thank you for all.
Thank you very much, uh, Gemma. And fantastic to see that in the era of urbanization, there is a reminder like the museum that, uh, shows us how we need to look back to look forward and how preserving, uh, food and agricultural rural, rural practices can actually help us drive to a more sustainable future food system. And our final speaker, before we move to the Q and A, is Lamia Boziri. Lamia is a scientific researcher at the Water Research and Technology Centre based in Sedria, Tunisia and a member of the research agua, basado en Sedria, Tunísia, y es miembro de la Asociación de Investigación y Acción. En la asociación, ella trabaja en la promoción de la agricultura urbana y su inclusión en los planes estratégicos de las ciudades en Tunís a través del proyecto europeo Edisit Net. Lamia es doctora en Ciencias Ambientales de la Universidad de Marseille de Francia. Antes de que Lamia presentase, me gustaría animar a nuestros presentadores a ir a la sección de preguntas y respuestas y comenzar a responder algunas de las preguntas que nuestros participantes están lanzando y, ya sabes, algunas preguntas muy buenas pasando por el chat y como no tendremos tiempo de ir a través de todos ellos, podríamos estar respondiéndolos online. Así que ahora a ti, Lamia.
Buenos días. Feliz de ser parte de este webinar como miembro de React, involucrado en el proyecto Edible Cities Network y apoyando a la comunidad de Cartaj hacia su transición a una ciudad edible. El elegir mi tema, mejorar el legado de Cartaj hacia un futuro de ciudad edible, es motivado por el hecho de que el heredero patrimonial de Cartaj es comúnmente citado como una barrera a su transición hacia una ciudad edible. Siguiente slide, por favor. De hecho, el 70% del territorio de Cartaj es protegido y clasificado como un heredero mundial de la Unesco y es debido al hecho de que Cartaj fue una gran ciudad de antaques ubicada en Norteamérica. Hoy en día es una suburbia residencial de Tunís. Siguiente, por favor. Fue fundado por Finicia en el siglo VIII antes de la Cristianidad como colonia comercial. Los cartajones eran agricultores habiles y la ciudad fue donde se escribió el primer libro de agricultura en el mundo, escrito por el mago punic. Como puedes ver en, estos mosaicos pueden mostrar que Cartaj, estos mosaicos recuerdan el glorioso camino agrícola de Cartaj cuando se consideró como la granera de Roma. Siguiente, por favor. Para construir este antiguo heredero, heredera de comida y heredera agrícola, diversidad vegetal local, los habitantes murieron de la cárcel durante la era punic, romana y bisantina. Se realizó un estudio sobre restos de plantas, semillas, polvos, frutos y madera. Estos restos de plantas fueron recuperados de sedimentos y depósitos en el mar y el suelo y depósitos de Cartaj. Este estudio está detallado en las referencias citadas. Así que para hacer este patrimonio agrícola e inspirando una transición a una ciudad edible, React y Cartaj están trabajando, siguiente, por favor, trabajando en la creación de una red de ECS tunísica para monitorear, compartir experiencia y experiencia y experiencia entre los miembros de la red. Siguiente, por favor. Y estamos trabajando en apoyar la implementación de ECS en Cartaj haciendo llamadas como la llamada Edible Cartaj. A través de esta llamada, cinco candidatos fueron seleccionados de acuerdo a criterios de sostenibilidad, cómo su proyecto puede cumplir con los desafíos sociales locales, cómo este proyecto, cómo las ECS integran la patrimonio, la integración, patrimonio y sitios históricos y heredera agrícola a través de la introducción de especies indígenas. Siguiente, por favor. Entre los seleccionados de las ECS tenemos el Jardin d'Amicar, que es básicamente un jardín vegetal familiar que ahora está aspirando a convertirse en proyecto ECS por vender comida saludable, consejos y entrenamiento para los ciudadanos y otros ECS en Cartaj. Siguiente, por favor. Otra ECS es Cartaj Zaharet Leblède, que es un pequeño campo productor de plantas nobles para especies auténticas de semillas tunísimas que está aspirando a establecer una banca verde de semillas locales para suministrar a los agricultores urbanos en Cartaj. Siguiente, por favor. Aquí hay otras ideas de futuras ECS, la iniciativa de la solución a la ciudad edible, ECS, esta es la abreviación de eso, que pretende valorizar el heredero histórico para la producción de comida. El primero es una iniciativa privada para implementar un campo urbano productor de hongos y semillas medicinales en un coveo romano ubicado en el fondo de una casa privada. Siguiente, por favor. La segunda es una iniciativa de la startup Green Square Urban Farm, que es un campo urbano especializado en la producción de plantas sprout de semillas, que proveen comida de alta nutrición y valor de sabor. Esta startup está aspirando a producir sprouts de plantas nativas en cuevas romanas y cerdos. Así que como puedes ver en la imagen, estos son los cerdos romanos para el agua y antiguos... Siguiente, por favor. Entonces, todos estos ECS están beneficiando a través del apoyo de EdisitNet, beneficiando a través de la ayuda para crear identidad, establecer una estrategia de marketing y comunicación. Se les advierte para sus nuevas y innovadoras actividades. Se espera que ayuden a EdisitNet a aumentar la conciencia sobre la promoción de ECS, promocionando el uso de semillas nativas y cumplir con algunos desafíos locales. Siguiente, por favor. Entonces, a través de EdisitNet estamos ayudando a las iniciativas de ECS a colaborar, intercambiar experiencias, haciendo que las ECS beneficien de la expertise en la producción de comida urbana, que ahora están disponibles gracias al red de la ciudad edible tunísica. Estamos trabajando para hacer de Cartaj un legado histórico y una oportunidad de innovación en lugar de considerarlo como una barrera, y estamos tratando de mejorar los sitios históricos con agricultura no invasiva basada en plantas nativas y prácticas ancestrales. Y terminaré con este pensamiento, como las especies nativas son las más adaptables al clima y el medio ambiente tunísico, pueden asegurar una transición sostenible o un regreso a una ciudad edible de Cartaj, porque sabes que Cartaj fue glorioso y tenía una gran herencia en la agricultura. Siguiente, por favor. Gracias por tu atención y no dudes en unirse al proyecto Edible Cities Network y mirar en la página web de React para ver nuestras actividades. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Lamia, por la presentación. Nos hemos quedado sin tiempo con muy emocionantes presentaciones para las preguntas y respuestas, pero veo que nuestros oradores están respondiendo furiosamente a algunas de las preguntas que surgen con las preguntas y respuestas. Así que creo que en los últimos dos minutos que tenemos, me gustaría dar una pregunta a Amarantha, ya sabes, desde su perspectiva del Barcelona Council y estaría encantada de escuchar vuestras perspectivas sobre este tema de cómo estos principios de producción de comida tradicional, ya sabes, cómo podemos integrarlos en los sistemas de comida actuales y cómo ves la ciudad de Barcelona como si estuviera abrazando estos conceptos y los traer a la ciudad de la estrategia que mencionaste antes.
Muchas gracias. Es una pregunta muy interesante y pertinente. Creo que podemos aprender mucho de sistemas alternativos, de sistemas de comida alternativa, que son diferentes de los dominantes sistemas industriales, químicos intensivos, capitalistas de comida. Así es como podríamos describir los sistemas de comida dominantes. Y creo que tienen mucho, tienen mucho conocimiento tanto en términos sociales como ecológicos respecto a las diferentes etapas de la cadena de comida. Creo que para construir, construir futuros sostenibles vale la pena porque necesitamos profundamente transformar paradigmaticamente nuestra visión y nuestra relación con el resto del planeta en todas las dimensiones y también en la dimensión de la comida. Y es valioso buscar inspiración y buscar lo que ya ha estado trabajando durante muchos siglos en diferentes culturas y ver cómo podemos proyectar eso en el futuro, no solo como algo del pasado que podemos, que necesitamos preservar, sino como un instrumento de supervivencia y aspecto de supervivencia que puede llevarnos al futuro, en un futuro inhabitable para todos en este planeta. Creo que eso podemos encontrar en muchas diferentes culturas y el conocimiento tradicional que ha sido cultivado y practicado en muchas culturas indígenas y culturas tradicionales. ¿Cómo Barcelona es, a qué punto esto podría ser integrado en el desafío de Barcelona? Bueno, esto es como el desafío de Barcelona, la estrategia de Barcelona. Este es un desafío, la estrategia de Barcelona será un proceso, al final del día es un proceso que empieza ahora en noviembre, involucrando a diferentes partes interesadas dentro del sistema de comida y en algún momento tendrá una consulta con toda la sociedad en la que todos estos problemas también pueden ser traídos a la mesa, ya sea de los partes interesadas en el sistema de comida o de este momento, que será aproximadamente, supongo que es en enero, febrero, algo así, en los terceros, los primeros tres meses del año, habrá este proceso de overprocess para contrastar y traer otras ideas que no han sido parte de la charla a la entrada en el proceso. Así que creo, creo, creo que hay una posibilidad allí, porque muchas veces cuando hablamos de innovación, solo estamos hablando, estamos pensando muy brevemente en nuevas tecnologías o cosas así, obviamente pueden jugar un papel, pero la innovación también es para mí también para rescatar, revitalizar, readaptar todo el conocimiento que ha existido en el planeta y que están trabajando y son perfectamente capaces de traer soluciones a la mesa.
Eso es genial. Muchas gracias, Amarantha. Y capté este pensamiento que has dicho, ya sabes, esto es aquí para inspirarnos y no solo para inspirarnos, para ver qué podemos mimar y llevar adelante. Así que vamos a terminar ahora un poco por tiempo, pero realmente me gustaría agradecer a los oradores así como al espectador fantástico por todas tus preguntas y comentarios a lo largo del evento y gracias al equipo de la Europa Aramita por hacer que el evento de hoy suceda. Por favor, tómense un momento para compartir su feedback en el webinar de hoy y pronto verás eso en las preguntas y respuestas y también pueden registrarse si quieren tener un certificado de atentado. También circularemos la grabación y las respuestas a las preguntas que quedan sin responder en las preguntas y respuestas. Así que gracias todas una vez más por unirse hoy y tenga un gran descanso de día.